Well, it's great to welcome you to the next session in our Bible study series. I hope that you're well and I hope that you enjoyed this session that we look at together just now. In the last few months, we've been thinking about Carpe Diem. We've been thinking about seizing the day and making the most of every opportunity. And I wonder how that journey has been for you so far? How it's been for you, thinking about will and human will, free will and the will of God? How it's been thinking about time and how we use our time? And if it's changed the way you think about how you spend your time, I wonder. In this third session, we're pausing to think about purpose. And I pray that today, God will really be with us as we just think about this briefly. But try to, you know, apply, you know, what does that mean for our life? As I began thinking about this, I began thinking about, you know, what is our purpose in life? What is it that we're aiming for? And it wasn't long before I had this picture in my mind of aiming maybe for a dartboard? Or aiming with a bow and arrow in archery? Aiming maybe for a hoop in basketball? Or aiming even just to throw something into a bin from a distance? And I thought about the fact that so often, I can only speak for me, but so often when I do that, I close one eye and try and get the shot perfect. The aim, trying to be just right, trying to get it where it should be. It made me think, you know, why is it that we do that? Why do we close one eye so often when we try to aim for something? I wonder what you think? Have you ever noticed that you close one eye when you're trying to aim for something? Maybe you don't. Why do you think we do this? Well, having thought about that, I looked it up. And the idea behind that practice is to lower the brain activity on the side of the brain that is not the dominant eye. It shuts down everything else so that it can focus clearly on the target. It can have that aim solely in mind, a purpose-driven vision. And as I've thought about that, although apparently it's not advisable to close one eye when you are playing archery, depending on which one your dominant eye is. But as I've thought about that, it's made me recognise spiritually, you know, how important vision is. If we are to be people of purpose, if we are to follow the will of God, if we are to use our time wisely, Carpe Diem and seize the day, making the most of every opportunity, then vision is vital. My thoughts led to those verses in Proverbs, in chapter 29 and verse 18. And so that's the first verse of scripture I share with you tonight. Proverbs, chapter 29 and verse 18 says, "Where there is no vision, the people perish." It reminded me of a quote I once heard that was spoken by the American evangelist Billy Sunday. He said that more men fail through lack of purpose than lack of talent. How important it is if we are to seize the day and make the most of every opportunity, to know what we're aiming for, to know what the vision is, to know where we are going. And so I wonder, what do you feel that your aim is in life? And is this something that you think about very often? It's possible that we are very full of purpose. And it's possible that we know our aim and we're working towards it. And yet we can be aiming for the wrong thing. How dangerous that would be in archery with a bow and arrow? And how risky that is in life, that we could spend our time very well focused, but on the wrong things? That's where we come back to week one really of our Bible studies about knowing the will of God. It's about making sure we have His vision and we're living with His purpose. I'm reminded of verses in the book of Colossians that I want to share with you just now. Colossians, chapter one and verse 16 say this, "For in Him all things were created, things in heaven and things on earth, visible and invisible. Whether thrones or powers or rulers or authorities, all things have been created through Him and for Him." As I think on those verses, I thank the Lord that we've been created by Him and for Him. And it makes my prayer even bolder and deeper today, that we would be living with a purpose and with an aim that is for Him alone. And if we are to be able to work that out and live with that purpose, then we have to continually offer our lives as a sacrifice to Him. We're told that in Romans, chapter 12, where we're encouraged, where we're urged, it says, "Brothers and sisters, in view of God's mercy, offer your bodies as a living sacrifice, holy and pleasing to God. This is your true and your proper worship. Do not conform to the pattern of this world, but be transformed by the renewing of your mind; for then you'll be able to test and approve what God's will is, His good, pleasing and His perfect will." I pray that as we continue on this journey tonight, that we would be encouraged not only to focus our vision on what the aim is for our life, but to remind ourselves that we have been created by God and for God's purposes. And that actually, as we sacrifice and give our life to Him each and every day, that's how we can test and approve what the purpose of God is for our life. I wonder how you test and approve what God's will is for you in your life? I wonder how we live with His purpose in mind, not just knowing our own aims? And like aiming with one eye closed, I wonder today, how can we concentrate our hearts to see and focus more clearly His purpose for our life? Let's take a moment to reflect on those questions personally. Well, there's many challenges here for us, aren't there? It's one thing to find out what God's will is, His good, pleasing and perfect will. And then to live with that purpose and that aim in mind. It's a whole other thing, once we know that, to keep focused and to keep our hearts connected to the Lord each and every day. There are many things that can distract us on the way. And just now we paused to think about just two of those ways that we can get distracted, when our focus is taken off of the aim, when we don't live with that purpose in mind. There's two particular passages of scripture that came to mind and to my heart as I was thinking about that. And I was thinking about the fact that so easily we can become distracted by other priorities in our life. It's hard, we spin many plates at times. There are many important things that we're responsible for. And yet in all of it, honouring God is that first purpose that we have. I was thinking about the verses in Luke's Gospel in chapter nine and from verse 57, where we hear about the cost of following Jesus and the different distractions, the different responsibilities that drew people away from that following. It says here, Luke's Gospel, chapter nine and from verse 57. "As they were walking along the road, a man said to them, 'I will follow you wherever you go. Foxes have dens and birds have nests, but the Son of Man has no place to lay his head.' He said to another man, 'Follow me.' But he replied, 'Lord, first let me go and let me bury my father.' Jesus said to him, 'Let the dead bury their own debt, but you go and you proclaim the kingdom of God.' Still another said, 'I will follow you, Lord, but first let me go back and say goodbye to my family.' Jesus replied, 'No one who puts a hand to the plough and looks back is fit for service in the kingdom of God.'" Those encounters there really make you sit up and catch your breath a bit. They're such bold and cross statements from Jesus there about that cost of following Him. To us, we hear those words and we think, how can you say that to someone who's bereaved of their father? How can you say that to someone who cherishes their family? And yet what Jesus is showing here is that amongst all the important priorities of life, following Him is the first call on our hearts. What do you think of those verses of scripture? Those priorities that people had and the way Jesus responded? Wonder how that makes us feel and what we think about it? And as we think about our own lives and the purpose that we live with, I wonder what other priorities sometimes take our attention? And I wonder if we balance them as best we can, so that we still honour our responsibilities, but we still follow Jesus first? As well as being distracted by other responsibilities and other priorities, I thought about them many, many times when we are actually distracted by busyness. When we busy ourselves so much that we give the Lord what's left, rather than the best of the day. I was thinking about the verses just in that next chapter in chapter 10, that we find from verse 38, where we have this window into the world of Martha and Mary at their home. We hear about Jesus visiting them and the different reactions they had to having that time with the Lord. "As Jesus and His disciples were on their way, He came to a village where a woman named Martha opened her home to Him. She had a sister called Mary, who sat at the Lord's feet, listening to what He said. But Martha was distracted by all the preparations that had to be made. She came to Him and she asked, 'Lord, don't you care that my sister has left me to do all the work by myself? Tell her to help me.' Martha, the Lord answered, 'You are worried and you are upset about many things, but few of these things are needed, or indeed only one. Mary has chosen what is better, and it will not be taken away from her.'" I wonder how often we are distracted and therefore we forget our purpose. We don't live with those aims in mind. Jesus told Martha that she was distracted by many things. Some of them were important, but actually only one was the most important thing. I wonder which things can distract you at times? I wonder for me, you know, what is it that distracts me? That takes my time and that takes my attention? What things do I think are important, but really they are not the priority? Let's take a moment to reflect on that just now. As I think on Mary and Martha, I'm also struck by the fact that we can be distracted, not only by priorities that we have, not only by busyness of doing things that we think are important, but we can also be very distracted by what other people are doing. For Martha on this day, she was distracted by Mary. She was cross that, you know, she was busy doing all that she thought was needed. And look at Mary, Mary is sat down doing nothing supposedly. She sat there simply listening to the Lord. For Martha, this was a big distraction for her, so much so that it was that she went to Jesus about. "Lord, don't you care that my sister has left me to do all the work by myself? Tell her to help me." Martha was convinced that Mary was in the wrong. She was convinced that Jesus should correct her. And yet what she found in worrying for others, in being distracted by what Mary had chosen to do, that actually Jesus didn't correct Mary, but took that as an opportunity to guide Martha. "You're worried and you're upset about many things," he said to her. "But few of these things are needed, or indeed only one. In fact, Mary has chosen what is better, and that won't be taken away from her." I wonder what we can do as we seek to live this life for the Lord? As we seek to live with purpose and make the most of every opportunity? What can we do to make sure that we are not distracted? Not distracted by other priorities that have maybe become too important? Not distracted by busyness and all the things that we think we need to do? And that we don't become distracted by what other people are doing? Maybe that's when we need to keep one eye closed, not looking at others, not looking around. But rather that we have one eye focused on what the Lord wants us to be doing. It's possible that, you know, we may get distracted from what our purpose is. We might lose that aim in life, as we've said, because of other priorities, busyness or thinking about other people. But it's also possible that we end up not living life for our purpose for other reasons. And it could be because we're frightened, we're frightened of failing, we're frightened of getting it wrong, we're frightened of making mistakes. I was thinking about those words of, from Jesus in the parable of the talents that's found in Matthew's Gospel in chapter 25. And I was thinking about how cautious some of those servants were in that story? How cautious they were to use what they'd been given in order to fulfil their purpose? Let's turn to those verses of scripture together just now. Matthew's Gospel, chapter 25 and from verse 14. And it says this, "The kingdom of heaven will be like a man going on a journey, who called his servants and entrusted his wealth to them. To one he gave five bags of gold, to another two bags, and to another one bag, each according to his ability. Then he went on his journey. The man who had received five bags of gold went at once and put his money to work and gained five bags more. So also, the one with two bags of gold gained two more. But the man who had received one bag went off. He dug a hole in the ground and he hid his master's money. After a long time, the master of those servants returned and settled his accounts with them. The man who had received five bags of gold brought the other five. 'Master,' he said, 'you entrusted me with five bags of gold. See, I have gained five more.' His master replied, 'Well done, good and faithful servant. You have been faithful with a few things. I will put you in charge of many things. Come and share your master's happiness.' The man with two bags of gold also came. 'Master,' he said, 'you entrusted me with two bags of gold. See, I have gained two more.' His master replied, 'Well done, good and faithful servant. You have been faithful with a few things. I will put you in charge of many things. Come and share your master's happiness.' Then the man who had received one bag of gold came. 'Master,' he said, 'I knew that you are a hard man, harvesting where you have not sown and gathering where you have not scattered seed. So I was afraid, and I went out and hid your gold in the ground. See, here is what belongs to you.' His master replied, 'You wicked and lazy servant. So you knew that I harvested where I have not sown and gather where I have not scattered seed? Well then, you should have put my money on deposit with the bankers, so that when I returned, I would have received it back with interest. So take the bag of gold from him and give it to the one who has ten bags. For whoever has will be given more, and they will have in abundance. Whoever does not have, even what they will have will be taken from them. And throw that worthless servant outside into the darkness, where there will be weeping and gnashing of teeth.'" Well, like those conversations that Jesus had about following Him, the words in this parable, they really don't mince their words, do they? They really are very bold and really quite harsh. Here we find, you know, this story of someone who gives his servants these entrusted bags of gold. And they're left to do what they think is right with it. They're entrusted with this gold and they want it to grow, they want to do well with it. One, as we know, you know, doubles his five to 10, one doubles his two to four. And the one who has one, we find out, was afraid. And he hides it and buries it. He's trustworthy in the sense that he doesn't squander it and waste it. He doesn't lose it, he has it to return. But he's not invested it and he's not used it well. And he says that this is because he is afraid. I wonder if sometimes we can be like that as we try to fulfil God's purpose for us? When we see what little we have to offer? When we know that our humanity and our sin and our failure is not perfect, far from it, and gets things wrong? We can think, well, if I can't get it all right, then I won't do it at all. And yet in that parable, the message that comes across loud and clear is that we are responsible for what the Lord has given us. And it's up to us what we do with it. Each and every day, we have the same 24 hours, that time that we thought about in the last session. For each and every one of us, we have our own free will, as we thought about in the first session. And yet we are all also led into the will of God. And so it's up to us what we do with it. If we are to make the most of every opportunity, if we are to seize the day, then there does have to be a boldness and a confidence. There is an important message there for us, that we may not be able to do everything, but we are encouraged to do something. That third servant was told, you know, even if you'd have put that money in the bank, at least there would have been interest. It reminds me of that song written by Graham Kendrick. "Go and do something beautiful, in the name of Jesus, do something beautiful." As I hear those words, I often feel, you know, a smile from the Lord that says, you know, just go and do something. You know, with each day that we have, do something for the Lord. We may not be able to do everything, but we can do a lot more than we think when we stay close to the will of God, when we keep our hearts and our minds fixed on Him, on His will and His purpose for our lives. From reflecting on that parable, the pastoral heart within me feels that poor man, that poor third servant who was afraid and so hid his talent and didn't have anything more to give back to the master. And I wonder how would those servants have felt? Did the first two servants feel smug and very pleased with themselves? Or did they sense, you know, a sense of a holy pride that they would have done the right thing? Did that third servant feel shame, embarrassment or regret, I wonder? I wonder what it feels like for us? When we know we've had something to offer the Lord and we've withheld it? I wonder how we feel when we've not lived up to our purpose and we have regrets? I also wonder how we feel when actually we know that we've done well with our time? And we know that we have focused on the Lord and done our best? I'm reminded of those verses in Psalm, Psalm number 16 and in verse 11, that remind us, you know, that it's God who shows us the path of life. "In His presence is the fulness of joy; at His right hand are pleasures forevermore." And as we come to a conclusion of thinking about purpose and how that fits into our life, I really do pray that we would know the joy and the pleasure and the fulfillment, not only of being in the presence of God, but actually of living in the purpose of God. I pray that, you know, like those first two servants, we would know the absolute joy of being able to offer to the Lord all that we have and all that we can do for Him. That we would know that joy and that pleasure in serving Him, fulfilling His will and following His purpose. May we know that fulfillment. And so as we draw our thoughts to a conclusion in this session, I really pray that we would know that joy and pleasure and fulfillment of living life in God's purpose with His purpose in mind. And that we would know the joy of being able to offer Him all of our days and all of our hours. Of course, that can only happen if we keep our hearts and our minds fixed on Him, on His will, His good, pleasing and perfect will. And keep His purpose the first in our hearts. And so I think of this song in our songbook, song number 392, which is often sung in such a bright and joyful manner, and yet is such a deep prayer that has been in my heart for many years. A prayer that says, you know, "Lord, teach me to dance to the beat of your heart, not to my own rhythm. Teach me to move in the power of your Spirit. And teach me to walk in the light of your presence. Help me, Lord, not to go my own way, but to go your way. Teach me to love with your heart of compassion. And teach me to trust in the word of your promise. Teach me to hope in the day of your coming. Teach me to dance to the beat of your heart." That really is the prayer I pray, and I wonder if you join me in praying it today for yourself? The reality that in Him is joy without measure. And the fact that we were made for His pleasure. The fact that we can live with His purpose in our hearts and have a heart that loves to say yes to His will. And when our will leaps to obey Him. This song really is packed full of those encouraging words of inspiration and words of joy as we live in the purpose of the Lord. We share them together just now before we share in prayer. Father God, I just want to thank you for the gift of life. And I thank you for the gift of knowing and loving and serving you. Lord, I pray that you will help us to learn more and more about how we can live our lives each and every day with your purpose the first in our hearts. Help us, Lord, not to be distracted. Help us, Lord, to come to know your good, your pleasing and your perfect will. Help us, Lord, to keep our eyes fixed on you. Help us not to be frightened, Lord, but to give our best to you each and every day. Lord, teach us to move to the beat of your Lord, teach us to move to the beat of your heart. Teach us to walk through life to your rhythm and to your passions. And Lord, be with us, be with us when we falter and we make mistakes. Let us know your grace and your forgiveness. Be with us, Lord, as we seek to serve you. Help us, Lord, to seize the day. Help us to make the most of every opportunity. Help us to continue to journey with Jesus each and every day of our lives. I pray this, Lord, in your name. Amen. Well, over the last two months, each of our Bible study sessions has been followed up by group session here at our Savage Nomi Church in Maltby. And that's been wonderful to get back to group Bible study sessions. And I wanted to just let you know and remind you that we don't have any group session in this next month because of our December programme. And there won't be another Bible study session issued for December. But I look forward to meeting with you again in this way in January, when we will conclude this series. Although it seems strange to conclude a series in January, it leaves us with that great mindset for the new year about how we can seize the day. And we think about determination and we will think also about perseverance and how we can commit to seizing the day each and every day for the Lord. I pray that the Lord will bless you and use you in these coming months before we meet again. Thank you for sharing and I pray that God will be close to you in these days. Bye bye.